Okay, I'd like to call the Board of Education for the November 18th, 2014 to order.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda of the November 18th, 2014 regular meeting as presented.
We have a motion and a second. On, Dr. Rice and I.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the approval of the consent agenda items.
Move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
A motion and a second. On, Dr. Rice and I.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have public participation.
Good evening. I'm Tina Overly with the SGNEA, and I'd like to start off by thanking the school board members and the administration for your support before and on Election Day by signing the Amendment Three Resolution, attending the information meetings, because I know several of you did, and placing signs in your yards, mailing postcards, we had a few of those, and voting was a big thing, and actually, and the others worked outside the polling places, just kind of get the word out there, to help defeat Amendment Three. It was awesome. And then, Dr. Lindsey, when you put out that we were the fifth highest percentage-wise, that really made us, made me feel good, all the effort that we put into it, and Sharon Geisler and Mary Ellen Ladd, who kind of coordinated quite a few things going on, the phone banks and that, so, made us feel good. So, as far as the parents, the students, administration, faculty and staff of St. John are too. We are all winners in that area. And, so, also, the SGNEA would like to show our gratitude and appreciation to the administration, faculty and staff this week, with some sweet treats tomorrow in honor of the National Education Week. So, cookies will be delivered to each of their buildings and the district office, so, board members, if you're available tomorrow, you can bebop around to the four buildings and the administration can get you a cookie. And, actually, thanks to Janelle Rice and her husband with Subway, they were gracious enough to supply, come up with a deal for us, so, that was good. And then, also, in the season of giving, the SGNEA has made a donation to Shop With A Cop, and I hope you've received that. And then, also, upcoming dates that you might be interested in, I know I talked to Martha the last week, on Wednesday, February 25th, is the Capitol Action Days that our governess district will go to Jeff City, and hopefully, I would like to attend that if there's no snow days that cause conflict like last year. And then, also, we got a notice out late last year, but Thursday, April 9th of 2015, is our Jefferson County Legislative Dinner in Crystal City, and I will be getting you invitations later on, but I wanted you to mark your calendars, just in case all of those other meetings start popping up in January. So, I could thank you again for your support.
Do you want us the yard signs back, or do we just?
No, actually, we hope we never have to see those again.
I know there's somebody touch it.
Yeah. I asked and they said, no, they're not worth anything now, but if you wanted to keep them, say, you want to staple something on top of it, like if you're having your own garage sale or something, it's a good sign, but as far as, we don't need them back.
Okay, next, we have the report of the superintendent.
Yes, we have several notes of appreciation that are in your booklet that you can review. Parent-teacher conferences were held recently, October 23rd, and we had a pretty typical turnout, the elementaries around the 90s, 90 percent, the middle school was at about 58 percent, and then the high school was at about 42 percent, which is pretty typical to, to past years we've had. Yes?
Are you going on to something else? Were you still on parent-teacher conferences?
Did you have a question about parent-teacher conferences?
No, sir.
Okay. Do you want to move on to something else?
No, sir. If it's okay, if I have to go backwards.
Okay.
I'd like to bring attention to this thank you note here from the Minnesota School District. It's addressed to the Board of Education, but it's really, should be mostly directed at Mr. Haney, and I guess the other, the board, other board members have read it as well as I have, but I think it's interesting that it says in here, something that all of us really get a little bit heated on, "The news in DESI often puts schools in a position to be in competition with one another, resulting in a lack of sharing what works best between schools." And I'd like to, you know, give a pat on the back to Mr. Haney for doing just exactly what a good principal would do, who has an excellent math department to help another district, a larger district, to be successful, because I think if all schools would work in that way, there'd be less of this sweating, sweating bullets through the standardized testing part of the schoolyard. So, bravo to Mr. Haney and his staff for bringing that together, and I'm sure that all goes, like I said, addressed to the dear members of the Board of Education. We need to give him the recognition for going above and beyond the call of duty to help the school district. Bravo, Mr. Haney.
Absolutely. Thank you for letting me go backwards. Yes, no, no problem, and, you know, that's one thing that, that we see quite a bit of. We have other districts that want to come see what it is that we do, and, you know, always, they're impressed. In this particular case, I think Mr. Haney was an excellent host for them, and the math department worked with them and shared a lot of information for them. So, yes, thank you. Wanted to provide just a little, little bit of an update with regard to ball fields that are owned by the county and the city. We continue to have conversations with them about the possible transfer of those fields over to the school district. Obviously, you know, our, our goal would be to, you know, provide the best opportunities that we can for our kids, make some upgrades to those facilities, and personalize them to St. John Be Dragons and those kinds of things. We continue to have, have discussions and conversations with both of them, and this, this would be the Yanks Fields and Leon's Field. Things have gone well so far, and it, it will likely be an agenda item at the December meeting for us to consider that as a board, so I want to, to let you know about that. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Flea for the segregated graduation rate.
Okay, you should have a report, the board faculty. The data that you're looking at here comes from our June core data enrollment and attendance files. It is an IMSA V five report from DESI, and it examines State R five, our graduation rate. So, to achieve the full 30 points on that standard, we have to have in the range of 92 percent to 100 percent on our overall graduation. In 2014, it was 93.9, so we got the full 30 points, which was wonderful. That is DESI's target, 2020 target that they have set for all districts to achieve by 2020. However, there's a disclaimer that they always put out there. They look at that data every three years, so they could adjust it, it could go up. Right now, it's 92 to 100 percent, so hopefully it stays there. But that's the disclaimer. So, on this graduation rate report, you have data for 2011, 12, 13, and 14. It was everything that I could pull off of that, out of the system for this report. I'm going to start with overall graduation rate and gender right under it, it's at the top. Our overall graduation rate has always been higher than the state, so, you know, that is really good. It has increased and grown as we've gone through those four years. Starting in 2011, we were at 89.6 percent, and the state was at 78.5. In 2012, we jumped to 88.5, and the state jumped to 83.7. In 2013, our graduation rate jumped to 93 percent, and the state made a little gain, 85.6. And then, last year, it was 93.9, with the state at 87.1. So, across the state, that overall number is growing, but we continue to stay ahead of it, and are going to work hard to continue to do that. If you look at our female graduation rate, and I'm just going to go through the district numbers, you can kind of see how we do. In 2011, we had 87.5 percent graduating. In '12, 88.7. In '13, we jumped up to 96.8. And then, in 2014, we did slide back, but we still held in the 90s at 91.8. Our male graduation rate, in 2011, we were at 91.8. '12, it dropped back to 88.3. '13, it was 88.5, and last year, it jumped up to 95.3. So, you know, that was a really good gain in that class as a whole. Then, what I'm going to do is I'm going to jump down and look at free and reduced lunch students. Our free students have consistently over four years, that graduation average has gone up. However, our reduced lunch students, for some reason, in 2012, really fell back, and with the other three, beyond that, we've made gains. So, if you look at our free and re, free lunch numbers, in 2011, we had 86 percent graduate, in 2012, 75. In 2013, 84.2, and in '14, 88.9. And then, on our reduced price lunch students, in 2011, 92.9. In 2012, 87.5. In 2013, our group, number of students wasn't big enough, so there's no data there. That's why you just have that star. It wasn't what they call a big enough cell size. And then, in 2014, 100 percent of them graduated. So, you know, graduation is, is hard to predict, but we started kindergarten, that's our whole goal, trying to get them to graduate, and each building works pretty hard to keep them in school, and, you know, kudos to the high school, they, they really focus in and start to track them and, and work with them and try to keep them here as much as we can. So, we will continue to closely monitor and assess this graduation rate and work with those kids that are right on the edge and we're hoping to put them in school, so.
Dr. Flea, that, that also takes in that some of them move away, right? Is that, or transfer or go to different schools? Is that part of that, too?
Yeah, it's, it's kind of...
I mean, just for people to know that it's not just...
Yeah, it's just not. But it starts as a cohort, whoever starts in ninth grade, and they have different ways to calculate. They have a four-year rate group, and then you have your five-year group, your six-year group, and your seven-year group. So, you know, it's kind of a multi-calculating.
And if I may...
Go ahead.
The other thing that's difficult about that is it also calculates a kid that moved in here late their junior year or early their senior year, and then dropped out, somebody who really wasn't ever a product of ours, but then we take that with just limited exposure. So, that's part of what makes it so tough to predict, is, you know, it's, it's a challenge, because you want to put faith and belief in every kid and accept them and think that you can make a difference, and sometimes they just come in with the same problems that they brought from somewhere else, and it's very difficult.
We will continue to fight and try to stay above that 92 percent.
I think one thing that I would, that I would add that, that is pretty impressive, and is really, you know, an indication of, of the building administration's leadership and the guidance council staff, through faculty, everybody, and that is that not only will we be above the state average for the overall rate, but in every single subcategory, we score higher than the state average. And I think that's a good impression.
That's why we are St. John, right? You guys are, we all know that.
Onto principal reports?
Yeah.
And Mr. Haney.
I've said it a lot this, this month to the staff, but, you know, I keep seeing to end emails with, "It's a great day to be a dragon," and as I look back on this month and the report, it truly was. I mean, this was, we didn't do a whole lot of one thing, but we did a bunch of little things along the way. Reagan Zurwig was a recipient of the DAR Good Citizen Award. At SGHS, we had several high school clubs participate in the trick-or-treat for canned goods, which is neat, because that comes right off our canned food drive and right before our November Thanksgiving food drive, so it's like three in a row, and yet, we still get great participation. And for those of you that don't know, that's where the clubs actually tell the subdivisions they're going to come, they're going to trick-or-treat for canned goods, and certain clubs target certain subdivisions, they know in advance they're coming, and they actually go around house to house and collect those canned goods. It's really a neat, neat thing for us and great for the community. Sad, the Red Ribbon, I can never do that. Red Ribbon Week, congratulations to the junior class who came in first place with 204 points for being dressed up the most. The sophomores came in second, seniors were third, and our freshmen were last, but of course, the freshmen, we'll work on that and get them to where they need to be in the future. Cross-country, couple places here, congratulations. I think I may have talked about the third place finish at the district meet for the boys, and first place at the district meet for the girls last time. The big thing was we went to state, and in all the years that I've been watching cross-country and ball, our girls finished second, but what's important to note is they actually tied for first, but then lost it on a tiebreaker, that six runner. So, it was, it was incredibly tight one, but I will also be very gracious, because if you're going to lose to somebody, Festus is just an incredible group of young ladies to lose to, great coaching, and I also want to remind people that that's one and two in our district right there. You know, that's, our district coming out of there was tops in the state also. So, it's, it was a great team to lose to, if you're going to have to take a second, you took second to a good group, but I'm excited that they'll be back. Our All-State Girls this year were Taylor Warner, who of course won her third straight state championship, Maya German, who was second. I mean, that's pretty tough, when you finish second in cross-country and you're losing out to your teammate. You know, that's phenomenal to do that. And Amy Hook was 18th, those were our All-State Girls. Boys, Ben Naggar was second, and finished just behind the Festus kid who's a senior. So, Ben's got his heart cut out for him, but there's a real good chance he could be a state champion in the future, and I'm excited about that, because if he can do it next year with Taylor, that'd be the first time we've ever seen one in his category in the same year. And then, another one I'd like to point out is Skylar Ogden, where if you know the Ogden boys, it was just phenomenal for him to finish 17th in the All-State. His brother finished 31st, probably still hasn't stopped hearing about it. But, and Mr. Boyd, who's now lighter on top, because apparently when the season started, bet Skylar that if he made All-State, he'd cut his hair, cut the curls off. Never dreamed for a minute it would happen, and then he finished 17th. But actually, as I come around, I think Mr. Boyd gave Skylar his bag of hair at the Athletic Pinkwood to make sure that he could have it as a souvenir. Stars, our Stars program has been busy packing the backpacks for the elementary program here on campus. Our Skills USA hosted a three-on-three basketball tournament. Our NJHS sold hashtag shirts to promote SG pride. They funded scholarships with this, they did a car wash, and were able to donate to the centennial celebration, to Red Ribbon Week, and they also held their induction ceremony in the pack. If that wasn't enough, they worked with a bake sale to donate to Shop With A Cop, did a quilt raffle to donate to the Lindsey Roth Memorial, and they volunteered at the Halloween Happening at the St. John Community Center. Mentors, which actually, Amy Rowland, who does our NJHS and also works with our mentors, have been insanely busy. They visited the eighth-grade mathematics classrooms during Red Ribbon Week. Mentors spent time giving information about the cycle of addiction, refusal skills, and facilitated role-play saying no, and gave them suggestions on alternatives to direct you, such as getting involved in high school activities, which of course is a key, what we believe to be our success when you get here. The FBLA, the advisors and officers hosted the annual Home Company Alumni Hospitality Room, I think I forgot to mention that last time. It was held right after the parade. They donated money to Red Ribbon Week, and eight members of FBLA chapter traveled to St. Charles Community College to attend the Show Me Leadership Conference. FCCLA, the students from St. John High School attended the 2014 Missouri Family Career and Community Leaders of America Fall Leadership Conference at Tantara. These members included Taylor Hasty, Dana Ditch, Abby Stolzer, Nicole Bolin, Allison Bova, Bailey Smith, and Selena Kreitler. Dr. Eddington also, of course, attended with them. Onto the last two things, as if I haven't said enough, and these are the things, I'm going to be like a tire on a hill, I can just get you on these and talk all day, because they've been really neat. We were able to fire up the scoreboard down in the gym this week, and it was really neat, because we had 11 students in there, so we got trained by Dactronics, and by the end of the training, there were certain things that Dactronics was like, "We'll have to get back to you on," and the kids were already doing. The live camera shots and stuff like that, through that display, working on those graphics, doing that sort of thing, was just absolutely amazing, and to see them come on, and the first day we had it on to see, as the kids left at 3:05, they walked in, they saw the gym, they were out there taking pictures of it, because they'd just never seen anything, you know, they've seen it like it, but to be in their gym, in their place, and realizing that it was real, everything we've talked about for the past year, was just really neat. So, I want to take a moment to, of course, thank our sports boosters, who worked really hard on that, Carrie Stafford, who put in extra time on that, and of course, Jeff Nix, who, without, you know, our distinct athletic director, none of that would have been possible, just did an amazing job. And if you get a chance, we're having a running on Friday, and we're talking about our NHS induction class, which will be 19 this year, and during the running, but we're also going to kind of have a little fun with the video board for a couple minutes and show the whole school really where we think we're headed with it. I think it'll be a great opportunity to promote what our kids do, and the buy-in that they're already having on it is just, like I said, it's just really great to watch that group work together, and they're already kind of forming the marketing business. Who's going to actually run the hardware side of it? Who's going to do those sort of things directly with the board? Who's going to do the backend work? Who's going to organize it? Who's going to put the club together? The whole nine yards, it was just really neat to see those kids mesh and come together on this project, and it just, I think the sky's the limit for them. And then, the last thing I want to talk about is we had our inaugural winner of the Patched Overall Scholarship. You may remember Tyson Schaffner came to the honors banquet last year and gave a little bit of background on that. To me, what was so special about that was, I talked to two of the people, Carrie Stafford was on the board, and Jamie Bowman was on the board, and both of them kind of mentioned that it was one of the neatest things they've been involved with in education. And, you know, to me, this is an alumni who's decided to start this foundation and donate this money, and it started with his own personal money. To have this dragon come back and do this for us, just speaks volumes of not only Tyson Schaffner as an individual in my eyes, but is what these alumni in the community is starting to see in our school, from the video display boards and the partners that went into that, to people like Tyson Schaffner. And I'm proud to report, if I may, that Allison Bova was the first winner, the inaugural winner of that, and I believe, help me out here, Dad, if I'm a little off, it's a Caribbean trip for marine biology, and that's sort of the, you're not liking to think about it?
Twelve days in French West Indies on catamaran.
There you go. There you go.
You're going or? No.
No. No, and, and she may wish she had by the time she gets back, but the key to all of that was, you know, the experience for the kids, and providing that once-a-lifetime opportunity, and of course, when she has to basically journal the whole thing and then come back and make an impact at the school. Those were sort of the two conditions he put on it. As of 24 hours after the announcement on Facebook, there were over 6,000 views of that announcement, 133 likes, and I think 30 some odd comments is the kind of publicity that was being generated for us from that and for Mr. Schaffner and that whole program. So, that's kind of what's going on at St. John High School. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got handouts. Just to remind everybody, we are having an advisory focus this year, so Monday and Tuesday is grade check, Reading Day, Thursday is relationship building, and Friday is celebrations and rewards. Dr. Flea will be happy to know that the Student Watch Program, her dissertation topic, has been continued by me. We've got 25 students in the Student Watch Program currently, and that's going to tie in with advisory and grade check. I contacted the advisors today, and they're going to be working with those students, as well as, those students are going to be meeting with me once a week to go over grades, attendance, GPA, any issues at home, and stuff like that, so. PLC teams are focusing on data still. We're in the process of reviewing communication styles with them. We had some reschedules from last week, we're trying to get in this week. Teams are beginning to look at their second quarter benchmarks and analyze them for depth of knowledge and conduct item analysis on them. October 20th through the 23rd was Career Week. Lots of activities going on that week. Monday was Shadow Day. We had people come in to talk about engineering, graphics, business, auto mechanics, healthcare, and agricultural science. Tuesday was Career Day. Rob Zolkowski, Dave Striler, Tyson Schaffner, Jackie Gons, Gary Stolzer, Sheila Henderson, Chris Huddleston, Amy Helby, Scott Drury, Jerry Meeker, Eric Bosler, and Andrea Stolzer were all speakers that day. Wednesday was What It Takes Day. Laura Kleinschmidt from SLU, Angie Mezzo from Bloomsdale Excavating, Julie Sheets from Mineral Area College, Scott Mercer from the A-plus program at the high school, and Dr. Lindsey all came in and spoke to our kids that day. Thursday was the eighth-grade Vo-Tech trip to Perryville, where students got on the bus and went and looked at a variety of different classes that they offer at Perryville. Congratulations and thanks to Amy Rowland for a fantastic week with great guest speakers. Community comes in and, and the kids love having them. They love seeing the, our community members come in and speak to them on a real level and, and give them some insight into what they might be doing in the future. Chris covered, or Dr. Lindsey covered, parent-teacher conference and our percentage of participation from the parents, so we had a successful parent-teacher conference. Red Ribbon Week, Chris kind of touched on. We had great participation during Red Ribbon Week. We had a fantastic drug presentation. It was focused on heroin, so it's directly applicable to what law enforcement tells us is going on in our community and is really hitting people hard. Thanks to Beth Geisler, Bree Usel, Jan Weith, and Amy Meyer for organizing and having a successful Red Ribbon Week. We also had Science Fair, October 27th through October 30th, and that's the handout I gave you. There's a whole lot of winners on that handout. Science Department worked really, really hard putting that together, and I want to thank our elementary for coming, bringing their kids up. They, they bring their kids up and they go through and they look at all those experiments, and that kind of creates excitement at their level, so by the time they get to us, they, they might have some ideas. So, I want to thank them. We had Veterans Day Assembly on November 10th. We had excellent student behavior, as always. Our students really take that assembly serious. Our student council, high school student council president Jessica Probst, and middle school student council president Brooke Wyler were the speakers there. They did a fantastic job as well. NJHS kindness award this month goes to Zach Thompson. He's the son of Larry and Kathy Doherty. His teacher said that he's a thoughtful, caring, genuine person. Zach went out of his way to make a new student feel welcome this quarter, and was also essential in cleaning up a massive flood in two teachers' classrooms, so evidently the flood followed Zach around. Dragons showing character for first quarter. The word was courage. Eighth grade Chad Donzie, son of Joan and Tim Donzie. Seventh grade Dylan Puckett, son of Karen Puckett. Sixth grade Antonio Devoto, son of August and Terry Devoto. NJHS members, NJHS members volunteered to help at Halloween Happenings at the Community Center. We had a movie night last Friday, they showed The Virgin. NJHS Star of the Month was ninth grader, and I'm kind of stepping on Chris's toes here, but Amy's ours, too, so, ninth grader Morgan Denton. Morgan is the daughter of Charles Denton and Mary Miller. Morgan was chosen by the officers and chairman of the organization for her dedication to the chapter. Fall sports finished up. Congratulations to all the participants. Eighth grade volleyball did place third in the conference tourney. Middle school cross-country, we're going to kind of keep feeding the high school, I guess. We had two champions, Sarah Moore for the girls and Chase Kohler for the boys. Both, both came in first in their conference. Sarah, I think, only lost, only came in second one race, all the other races she came in first. Chase kind of fell off a little bit and came back strong at the end, so. And finally, our feature teacher for the month of November was Sharon Fowler. With the Veterans Program coming up, I think Sharon would be a great nomination. There is so much behind the scenes that makes the Veterans Program's success every year. Sharon stepped in when Lois Fleek retired and took on the Veteran Program. The community enjoys coming each year to this, and it is such a great program to remind the students why they are off on Veterans Day. Sharon also does so much with the Wings Program, National Junior Honor Society, and other projects around the school, besides being a great teacher to her students. There is also her sewing talents. Whenever we need a special gift, she can whip something up in no time. I want to nominate Sharon Fowler for our feature teacher, so we can show our appreciation for everything she does for St. John. She sponsors NJHS, and that organization has become very active. She coordinates the Veterans Day Assembly, which takes a great deal of planning and preparation. She organizes the quarterly Wings Program, which the students have come to look for. She organizes the quarterly Wings Program, which the students have come to look forward to. And she's an extremely dedicated special education teacher. So Sharon Fowler is our feature teacher. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. When we look back over the calendar, it's just amazing. I think, oh, that's why we're so exhausted. Because October is a huge month, a huge month. Our Student of the Month character trait for October is responsibility. So we had a student from each classroom and we celebrated with a luncheon. We did have a Title I Parent Advisory Meeting and got some information out to them and then collected some information back about how we're doing and things that they had ideas about. Jessica Griminger, our elementary counselor, held a Career Day for fourth and fifth grade. Held it at the pack and it's always a big day when we get to go over to the pack. It's just, it's a great place. It's just a great place to be and I don't know if it puts you in the mood. Celebrating and honoring things. We had the dentist in our building two times in the month of October. And we had a fundraiser that raised us a little over six thousand dollars. So we were excited about that. That pays for a lot of field trips and a lot of buses. So that's mainly what our fundraisers go for. The kindergarten had the fire truck and the smokehouse come to school and that's always a big event. And we celebrated homecoming with an assembly. An assembly in the gym and you get all of us in the gym and it's a party, I'll tell you that. McDonald's, we were offered by the McDonald's in town to come in and have a teacher night and we made over six hundred dollars. So we were thrilled with that. We had food power. This adventure was set up in the gym and I give Jerry Diesel credit for this. It was pre-K five and it was stations. And so they moved from one station to the next. It was interactive, informational, and it just takes you, takes kids from the farm to the table to their body for growth and energy. So it takes them all the way through that. So that was a great event for them. We've had flu shots and earthquake drills in our building, so a little bit of trauma. We've had family... Sometimes maybe more for the adults. Anyway, and I had mine. So we had family fun nights, our Title One Family Fun Nights with first and second grade. We have had seven Missouri reading initiative trainings in our building. We are going at that full force. We thank you for the support in that. And we've spent two days working on our response to intervention where we come together as teams and we regroup and we go from there. We also celebrated Red Ribbon Week. I did the same thing. All week long and ended it with a very nice assembly. And we had an awards ceremony for our kids that involved perfect attendance, citizenship, A and B honor roll. And then fourth grade still likes to do penmanship. So fourth grade does penmanship and we held that for grades K-five. PTA put on a trunk or treat out in the front parking lot and had, of course, trunks with treats. And then they had some games and other things for the students. And for the month, this is really in November, but for the month of November, the teachers came together and decided on a fundraiser for the Lindsey Roth Memorial. And so we decided it was a month of Mondays, so every Monday is Jeans Day. And you can ask any of them how well I like Jeans Day, but we're doing it and it's for a great cause. And that's the elementary school. Thank you.
At Bloomsdale Elementary, we had a very busy month too. October is busy. We had the dental program at our building twice. We had the canned food drive. We collected one thousand five hundred and fifty-five food items. And Ms. Kirchner's class was the winning class, donated the most items. Those food items were donated to three food pantries up north by our school. So when it's donated by our community, then it gives back to our community. So thank you for sending those cans. We had a talent show and we had several, this was the most we've ever had. We had like fifty-two participants. And we had three board members came out and judged. Thank you for doing that, Mr. Prether, Ms. Resinger and Mr. Rebloff. It was really nice. I'm always amazed at where those little kids can get up there and sing and dance in front of everybody. I couldn't do that.
It was hard. I mean, they were just that good. They were really good.
You'll probably see some of them on TV. Okay, we had a fire drill on October sixth and we were out of the building in one minute and fourteen seconds, which is almost what we should be. The fire department was there and they didn't see any improvements that we had to make because usually they walk around and tell us things that we need to do differently, but they said it was perfect. Just a little faster. And then they met with kindergarten and fourth grade and went over, you know, what to do in a fire. And they showed them the truck and the equipment. And then first grade went on a music field trip to Hanging with the Giants by the Jazz St. Louis Performance Band. And we also participated in McTeachers Night. We participated in McDonald's at McDonald's in Bloomsdale. And the manager there was impressed at how many people we had come out. We earned four hundred and eighty-eight dollars for our smaller school, which was awesome, we thought. We had a homecoming pep assembly on homecoming October tenth. We had bus driver appreciation week where PTO and teachers donated items and stood out and gave it to the bus drivers every day. They appreciated that. We did the interview testing with second and fourth grade. That's kind of like a group IQ test and the kids did really well on that. St. Genevieve County Health came out and gave flu shots. We participated in the Shake Out earthquake drill and everyone was in place in one minute and one second. So we did that a little bit quicker. We had the CMO Explorer Bus at Bloomsdale on October seventeenth. And that was United States History theme, second through fifth grade. Got to go out to the bus and hear the presentation and look at the displays. Three high school students from the Athletes Reading the Students Program. Mr. Nix brought them out and they read books to the third grade students and talked about the books with the kids. The students really enjoyed that because they get to talk to them about what they're going to get to do in high school and how it is to be in sports. We had an AR Accelerated Reading Reward Day. Those students that met their goals got to participate. We had parent-teacher conferences and we had about ninety-one percent that night. But if they don't show up that night, then we continue for the next week trying to get them to come in for meetings. So we had more than that by the end of the week or the end of the next week. We had the book fair that ended on October thirty-first and we participated in All for Books Program. It's where Scholastic donates books back and we earned two hundred and three dollars. And then they matched it, so we got four hundred dollars of free books for the library. Red Ribbon Week was held and we dressed up every day for different themes. And then we had the Drug Dog Assembly. We had wellness screening. We had twenty-one employees participate in the wellness screening. It was nice because it came out to our building. We appreciated that. On October twenty-ninth, Ms. Bowen, Ms. Sarudi, Ms. Rice and myself attended Professional Learning Communities Conference in Jackson. We had facility committees meeting in the projection room. PTO held a trunk or treat on Halloween night on the parking lot. We had the Family Nutrition Program, which is through Missouri Extension Office. They send out a teacher and she teaches us about nutrition. And we also had seven MRI trainings and we wanted to thank you for that too because it is really teaching our teachers some strategies that they need for the new upcoming tests. Today we did close reading, which was kind of eye-opening and we're going to be using those strategies. So we appreciate that. We had two data team meetings. Something to brag on in that is our kindergarten first grade. We have a goal set for this time of year and most of our kids are already at that goal. So our small groups were really small, so we could do some enrichment groups where the higher level kids got to participate. So that's it at Bloomsdale.
I'm telling you, I could come every, we could have this night every, every week. Have one night just to listen to you guys.
I mean, just to hear this and it's all because of you guys, all of you. Thank you so much.
I wanted to thank you guys too. I didn't get to Bloomsdale, I apologize. But I got to the Veterans Day celebrations and those are awesome. So to everyone who helped with that, thank you.
Was there anything with safety?
No, you have the reports of the drills, the various drills.
We'll move on to unfinished business. The instructional program presentation in fifth grade. Fifth grade.
Sure. Okay, for math, we currently use the McGraw-Hill Math Series. Please as a supportive resource for the Missouri learning standards. The series, or this series actually offers not only a textbook, but it offers online resources like videos, a math tutor, free teaching materials and manipulative tips that they can actually use online, which is going to help with the upcoming testing too because that's all going to be online. We also, another resource that we have is a Title One aid, which I've noticed we've mentioned Title One a lot here tonight. So we obviously use those funds. She is able to take small groups of kids to work with. Sometimes she works with kids who need a little bit of extra practice. Sometimes she takes enrichment students that are kind of bored in the regular classroom and does some brain teaser activities. So we really utilize that resource and we're hoping that that smaller group instruction helps fill any gaps that we've had by the time they get to fifth grade. So all of these resources, especially the fact that this is a brand-new series. We used it last year and this is our second year. We're hoping that this prepares us for this new test that we're all excited to see. And our math scores last year with this new series, we ranked number one in our conference. So we're kind of hoping that with the resources and students, we'll be able to hold that place. I think that's, that it for me. That's it?
I'll address just like reading and communication arts. I know Mrs. Gek teaches at Bloomsdale with us. Jennifer Kirchner and I'm Janelle Rice. And then Nina Gek also teaches with us out there, but she's not able to be here this evening. She did work on curriculum this past summer and she had said that they worked grades three, four and five to align the curriculum together using the Missouri learning standards. And then we addressed the learning objectives using the MRI strategies that Mrs. Zeusven and Mrs. Hip had talked about, that we had training today. And, you know, we take what we learn in training and we use that in the classroom, you know, through guided reading groups, through mini lessons and through strategic groups with our students. And we pull them up like that. We do individual conferencing with our students, both in reading and writing. And it's really taught us a lot just as far as how to more individualize instruction to students who need it. And so we combine that as well with other resources. I mean, we do still like, sometimes you may pull our old Basil series, but that's more kind of put off to the side and you use mentor texts and things like that in order to address objects with our kids. They seem to like it a lot better. Maybe pull them up in a group and work with them.
And I'm here to represent science education in fifth grade. It's the first year that we are tested across the state for science. And so we kind of focus on it a little bit more in fifth grade. We do teach all three main areas of science, life science, earth science and physical science. But probably the biggest difference is that we really start to look at teaching the students how to be a scientist, how to think like one. We do a lot of inquiry-based activities in the classroom. They learn how to use different science tools, ask science questions, come up with how to solve a problem and really get into testing their hypotheses and things like that. And our science scores have been really excellent in the fifth grade on up. And we have been invited to middle school several times. And while we're there, we always get to collaborate with the science teachers and we learn what we need to do better, what we're doing great and build some nerve.
Thank you.
Okay, next. Set the procedures for the annual school board election.
Yes, you have in your packet some information about board filing for the next election. We have two seats that are open currently occupied by Mrs. Joan Dunzie and Mr. David Kelva. Filing will begin December sixteenth at eight AM and will end on January twentieth at five PM. The dates, of course, will be posted in the newspaper. And I would recommend that you set the dates as they're listed in your packet.
Move to adopt the following resolution. Be resolved if Board of Education authorizes an election to be held on Tuesday, April seventh, 2015, to fill the two three-year terms as directors of St. Genevieve Board of Education. Furthermore, the notice of the election and certification of candidates shall be submitted to the county clerk in accordance with state statutes. Sir?
Motion and a second. I'm prepared by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
I will need a rule of thumb.
Oh, okay. Sorry, my monitoring's not working. Eric?
Yes.
Bosler?
Yes.
David Bogwell?
Yes.
Rick Rebloff?
Yes.
Terry McDaniel?
Yes. Yes.
Joan Dunzie?
Yes.
Martha Resinger?
Yes.
And Charlie Sada?
Yes, ma'am.
Any motion? Okay, everybody say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We do. And we're going to be, nobody can say we didn't. Next is new business, board policy updates.
We have just four additional policy updates. Of course, they are, we are part of the Missouri School Board Association. They provide us with policy updates, periodic, based on changes in the law or recent court cases, those sorts of things. So you have four policy updates this time, one having to do with school board elections. The basic change there is to allow disabled people and veterans that are on active duty to be able to file via certified MAF. So there's some provisions in our policy that we're now allowed for that. Change in the board meeting policy, minor change in food service management to make sure we're in line with the new couple of guidelines. And then also a fairly minor change in ceremonies and observances. Really, it changes our policy to what we already do. But it was a change based on some legislation and involves veterans having observances, which we already do. So any questions about any of those policies? You've had them for a while now. If not, I would recommend that you approve those proposed policies.
I move to approve the proposed policy changes and approve accompanying procedures in forms to be used at the discretion of the superintendent.
Second.
Motion and a second. I'm prepared by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion, yes. Okay, next is curriculum revisions.
Yeah, it would be me. This summer I worked with four areas, reading, agriculture, auto mechanics and music. I only have reading to bring you tonight. Auto mechanics is almost finished. I have a few more things I need to double check to make sure they're in line. So you will have auto mechanics in December. Agriculture, Mrs. Fritchie Dunzie and I are trying to set up a meeting with Mac to talk to their ag and horticulture chairpeople. She participates in something called Career Technical Education with Mac. And students enrolled in her landscaping and turf class right now can dual enroll basically for free and get three hours of credit at Mac as long as they pass their class. So we're working on getting maybe two, maybe three more for classes aligned that way. So our students who are interested in agriculture career can go that way. They get a few more hours here before they make the move to Mac. So we have to set that meeting up and we're trying. So we'll see if we can get that fit and that set up. Because some of her curriculum revisions may have to be tweaked and some of the courses extended. So we want to get it right before we bring it. Music is finished. However, they were writing new standards this summer and we knew that, but we kept waiting for them to come out and they never came out. So they wrote curriculum, they aligned it to the old standards and finished it up, looked great and new standards came out. So they just went into our BOOC, our curriculum writing program, last Friday, I think. And so I have to finish pulling them in and give the music teachers access to go and realign their curriculum to new standards. Because there's no reason to bring you that until it's done right. So with reading, um, Saint Jen Elementary and Boosa Elementary really did something great last year that really aligned and set them on the right path. They took the new standards and they did what we call unpacking. Um, and they not only unpacked at their grade level, they unpacked at the grade below and the grade above. And basically, and I, I kind of forewarned them, so if I get this wrong, they're gonna jump in. Unpacking means you take the standards and you circle and list all the verbs. You record the task, you summarize how the task changes from grade level to grade level. You define what your grade level must do to practice the standard and then you end with two questions. What must students know before you begin teaching a standard? And how will you know when students have learned the standard? So that's what they did throughout the whole school year. So when they came in to work on actually writing in June, they were prepared. They had gone to some trainings on how to align their reading curriculum with the standards too. And they came in with these binders and just basically sat down and had it all in their head. Um, they did sit in groups and talk about, you know, alignment K, K two, I think. And then they did some work three, four, five and even six to make sure it all just kind of building. We kept building point skills and building point skills. Um, went very smooth. So the curriculum is aligned to the Missouri Learning Standards. And just, you know, so we're clear, Missouri Learning Standards define the knowledge and skills students need at each grade level to be successful. But the Missouri Learning Standards do not get to us what the curriculum has to say. The curriculum is written by our teachers here at Saint Genevieve. So it is their curriculum. They align it to the standards, they create the activities, they write it all how we need it to be here at Saint Genevieve. So I, I just want you guys to know that. So they wrote the curriculum. Um, I read all of it, uh, made some changes and gave it back to them and they, they made the revision. So I really need to thank the following people for their hard work. And what we do is we stagger this, one teacher from Saint Jen, one from Bloomsdale. So at kindergarten, we had Latisha Mercer from Saint Jen. First grade, we had Emily Gek, which we started out in the week after he came. Emily.
Schleter.
Schleter. From Bloomsdale. Second grade, I had Angie Vioxx from Saint Jen. Third grade, Lynette Quah from Bloomsdale. Fourth grade, Teresa Russ from Saint Jen. Fifth grade was Nanya Gek from Bloomsdale. And then sixth grade was Ashley Merzloch from the middle school. So they worked very hard. They worked really good as a group. Um, sometimes I thought they weren't working because they were just talking, but they were really working and talking at the same time. So once that process was complete, um, we had a parent committee meeting. And we, I had each teacher invite a parent, K through six, and then teachers four, five and six to also invite a student. And we broke those committees, those groups apart when we met to discuss the curriculum. That way it wasn't so overwhelming for the parents and it felt more comfortable asking questions. I put, uh, K three together and four, five and six. So I felt like there were some really good discussions that came out, that they were all there. So the parent, you know, group offered some suggestions, asked a lot of questions, um, and gave us the approval to move forward. So now it's a point to approve.
I move to approve the curriculum revisions to the reading as presented.
Sir.
The motion and a second. I'll let everybody say an aye.
Aye.
Approve. Motion carried. Okay, next is our facilities committee review.
Uh, yes, and this is not an action item for your consideration tonight. It's, uh, you know, for the most part, I just wanted to provide an update kind of where we, where we are in the process and what the next steps are moving forward. Uh, we did, uh, put together a, a facilities, uh, district-wide facilities review committee, uh, that met, uh, I don't know, probably three weeks ago. Uh, something like that, uh, it's made up of, of, uh, board members, uh, administration, teachers, uh, classified staff members, community members, parents. Uh, we even had a couple of students, uh, that participated in the process. And, uh, so we came together as a district-wide committee and, and kind of talked about what the process would be moving forward. Uh, and then we split into building level committees. And each building level committee under the, the guidance and leadership of the building principal. Uh, then brainstormed ideas, uh, about the facility needs in each of their own particular buildings. Um, they, uh, conducted a building tour, uh, with their committees and then, uh, came back. Uh, their task was to provide a prioritized list, uh, back to me. And I gave them a, a, a pretty, uh, stringent deadline to, to meet to get that accomplished. And, and all, uh, all four building committees, uh, were able to do that. Uh, I had a preliminary meeting with the architect, uh, to kind of, uh, talk about some of the items. And, uh, he did some, uh, uh, review of the facilities. Of course, he had some past plans and that sort of thing to look at as well. Uh, we talked about some of the details of, of some of the, uh, items that have been identified. Uh, and then he is coming back on, on Friday of this week, uh, to do another campus tour. Bring an engineer or two with him, uh, talk about the particulars of some of the, uh, the items on the list. Uh, and then to, uh, try to develop some preliminary cost estimates, uh, line item, uh, basically for what each of the, uh, individual, uh, needs that were identified, uh, what it might cost to, to address those needs. Um, once I get that information, then I will integrate those four lists into, uh, one list for a presentation to back to the district-wide committee. Uh, we're meeting on December fourth, I believe it is. And, uh, so we will, uh, kind of go through the process of, of looking at that list and deciding if, if maybe something should be moved up or down, uh, on that list. Uh, and then the final list that comes out of that district-wide committee meeting, uh, will then be presented to you all at the December board meeting, uh, for your consideration uh, as to whether, uh, this is a, a project that we want to move forward with, um, in, uh, with a no tax increase bond issue in April of twenty fifteen. If it's something that we want to put off at some point in the future. Um, you know, and of course to make the final decisions about what projects, uh, fit within, uh, uh, within the bonding capacity that, that we will have available at, at that time. So, uh, kind of, uh, it's kind of a rundown of the basic process. Uh, I know some of you were able to participate in, in some of those meetings. But are there any questions at this point about where we are or, or the direction that we're, we're heading? A final decision will have to be made at the January meeting, um, in order to, uh, you know, if it's something that's going to, uh, to be on the ballot in April, then it has to be certified with the county, um, by late January. So, uh, that's kind of where we are in the process. Uh, you know, I really appreciate all the committee members. Uh, I think that, uh, you know, they've worked hard, they've put a lot of, uh, thought and, and time and effort into, um, compiling the list that they have and going through the, kind of the painstaking process of prioritizing, uh, and trying to put value on the, on the variety of projects that, uh, that are, that are on the list or variety of needs, uh, that are on the list. So, um, it, it's really been a comprehensive process and, and, uh, again, I want to thank the building principals for their leadership at the, you know, with those building level committees. And, uh, Dr. Flea has been attending and helping our process as well. And, and to, uh, to, to those of you that were able to, uh, to come also. So, any questions at, at this point?
I think, I think I went out, I think everybody. And have the ones and the needs, but the needs pretty well topped out everything. So, everybody has to know that that's what we're doing on, for our students.
Yeah, and I, I think upfront, you know, we, we stated that, um, and, and one of the reasons why we waited to attach dollar amounts to individual pieces that might go into the project is we wanted to prioritize this, uh, based on what they felt like were, you know, based on student needs, uh, not based on, on the cost of the individual projects. So, um, you know, at this point, I, I think, uh, I think they've come up with a, with a good product. And, uh, provided a good direction and we'll, we'll take that and move forward with it and, and go back to the committee and try to get a finalized, uh, recommendation to bring to you all.
How many times did the district committee met, you said?
District-wide committee met, uh, initially, and I don't remember the date, uh, on that. At that meeting, we broke into the four building level, uh, committees. Some of them, uh, went ahead and did their building tour, uh, that night. Uh, and some did it later. Uh, so we kind of allowed each building level committee to, to work best within the framework of their committee and let, let the committee themselves, uh, make that decision. So, um, I'm trying to remember, I think, uh, the night that we had the district-wide committee, the middle school completed the entire process. Uh, the elementary, uh, Saint Jen Elementary did so as well. Uh, Bloomsdale obviously had their building tour, uh, in a different time and, uh, I don't remember what the date of that was.
That was the design of the PTO and it was October twelfth, early November.
Yeah, it could've been. And, uh, then, uh, the high school, uh, of course, any of the projects that were kind of overall district-wide uh, kinds of things kind of got tacked on to the high school because that just seemed to where it, uh, seemed to be where it fit the best. Uh, so that committee was a little bit bigger, uh, which made it a little more difficult. Plus they had more items to consider. Uh, so they came back, uh, on a, on a separate night. Uh, the night that we had the district-wide committee, they went and did their building tour. Uh, but then they came back at a, at a later date and, uh, kind of went through the process of, of, uh, trying to prioritize all those, all those, uh, needs that were, that were listed. So.
Mr. McDaniel.
Real quick before you read it. Um, next month I am going to put an update on the backpack program. On the agenda for December. Um, but I do want to publicly thank Wholesome. I got an email last week from Lisa Schrant, um, that a large check is coming to us for the backpack program. And I got it, um, Friday. Wholesome for the second year in a row has donated nine thousand two hundred dollars for our backpack program. So, next month I do want to acknowledge and thank all of the businesses, but, you know, that one is by far the largest and, you know, second year in a row, they're really kind of building away. So I just wanted to publicly thank them and we'll get to all the other businesses next month.
I move that the Board of Education hold a closed meeting with a closed record and a closed vote. Filing the record of the meeting on December sixteenth, two thousand fourteen. Will be held near R. D. Thomas Library, seven fifteen Washington Street, Saint Jen, Missouri for the purpose of discussing and voting upon the following item of business. Legal action causes of action or litigation. Lease, purchase and sale of real estate. Hiring, firing, disbanding or promoting particular employees. Proceedings involving the mental or physical health of an identifiable individual. Galactic probation, expulsion or graduation of identifiable individuals. Testing and examination materials. Welfare cases of identifiable individuals. Preparation for negotiation with employee groups. Software code for electronic, electronic data processing and documentation thereof. Specification for competitive bidding until approved or published. Seal bids and related documents until the bids are open. Seal proposals and related documents until all proposals are rejected or any documents related to a negotiated contract until a contract is executed. Individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment. Records protected from disclosure by law. Scientific and technological innovation which the owner, in which the owner has a proprietary interest. Records relating to municipal hotlines established for the reporting of abuse and wrongdoing. Confidential privileged communication with an auditor. Operational guidelines, policies and specific response plans for preventing or responding to a cr- critical incident. Existing or proposed security system and structural plans of district property. A portion of a record that identifies security systems or access codes. Records that identify and would not allow unauthorized access to or unlawful disruption of the configuration of components or the operation of a computer, computer system, computer network or telecommunications network. Credit card numbers, personal identification numbers, digital certificates, physical and virtual keys, access codes or authorization codes that are used to protect electronic transactions. I further move to notice to this meeting and its terms of agenda be posted as required by law.
Sir.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call, Erin Bowser.
Yes.
Erin Bowber.
Yes.
Charlie Crowder.
Yes.
Joan Dunsey. Time again, we ask. Martha Reese here. Nick Ruloff.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven oh.
To go to a closed session with a closed record and closed vote after short break.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. I'll let everybody say an aye.
Aye.